Started, called the meeting to order. Welcome to our meeting. We are here to accomplish the business of schools for the sake of our students. We do want to hear from our citizens. There's time for public comment prior to action items. On the agenda, we ask speakers identify themselves in their home district. I also ask that your comments are limited to three minutes in order to provide equity to all speakers and ensure the meeting is reasonable. And if you have more information that can be summarized in three minutes, please provide leave behind materials for the board's review. The moderator will ask you to conclude your remarks as time is left. If you have questions during the session, you may ask for clarification from a school board member administrator after the meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming. I do need to make note that we have Rachel Bynum online tonight, and so she is participating. There is a board policy BDD which explains that twice a year, if needed, a board member can have remote, a virtual, be a virtual attendee. So the way it's written, it has various reasons that are legitimate, but Ms. Bynum has family obligation tonight, and she is calling in through our superintendent's laptop. But she genuinely, as a board member, will have, you know, the ability to interact the way a board member would as if she was here, and she will be voting as if she was here. So I'll just go into closed session. Sorry, Rach. Not closed session. So I just want to make sure everybody's aware of that. It also says that the remote nature has to be part of our minutes. So that's what's happening there. All right, let's stand for a pledge. A pledge and salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic, the Constitution of One Nation, under God, with liberty and justice in our hearts. A moment of solace, please. Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda this evening? Should we have a motion? Mr. Grove is our second.
Second.
Second from Ms. McCool. Any comments? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, close, no. So the adoption of the minutes for August 12th. I had noted a change to item 2.8, which all the difference is basically exchanging Mr. Grove's name for mine. So with that one change, that's the only thing that I would add that we'd be adopting in the minutes, that one change on 2.8. So is there a motion to adopt the minutes as presented, modified this evening?
Should we?
A motion, Mr. Grove is her second.
Second.
Second, Ms. McCool. Any other comments?
Sorry, 2.5.
It's 2.8.
No, no, I'm sorry, to go back to 2.5 when you're finished with the minutes.
Oh, you need to go back?
To the board.
Oh, I jumped, sorry. I'm so sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
So we have a motion for all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, close, no.
Aye.
It's ordered. Thanks. Heard you, Rach, that's good. So.
I can't, I can't, I can't, I can't hear. Mr. Grove, Zachary, Zachary Green, so quite well, but I can only hear a first discussion later if you actually are close to your microphone, just so everybody knows.
Everybody talk into their microphone nice and loud.
My person, yeah.
Sure, thanks, thanks for letting us know. All right, and unfortunately, I skipped item 2.5. Ms. Cassette, would you like to come and address the board this evening?
I would, thank you.
And I'm sure Rachel would love to hear what you have to say, so.
Nice and loud.
Nice and loud in the mic.
Very well. All right. Good evening, esteemed members of the school board, teachers, staff, and some family and everyone else in attendance. It is lovely to see you again after our last meeting. We are one month into the school year, which means that everything is off and running to a great start. I've had very wonderful experiences in my classes. I've gotten to see my friends. I've gotten to meet new people. I'm very excited that all of this has been happening. And with that said, we have our recent happenings at the school. With our POC team, we have just started our Turning the Tassel Thursdays event, which is for, which is for our senior class to largely get a head start on their college applications or their resumes or internships or anything else that may help them after their post-secondary journey, after graduation. Those have started, as I said, last Thursday, and they will be continuing every Thursday for the, sorry, for the foreseeable future as far as I know. So I would have liked to have attended the last one. Unfortunately, I had a test that I had to do, and so I wasn't able to do it. But all that said, we have our Turning the Tassel Thursdays, which will be continuing as long as needed. After that, we have our student council news. Recently, we had our student council officer elections and representatives, which are two representatives from each class that, yes, they represent their class in going to the student council and giving their voices as such, almost being a sort of liaison between their classes and student council for those who make decisions. For our officers, our elections were held, I believe, last Monday, and our SCA president was Carmen Pond. The vice president elected was Lucy Colvin. The social media officer was Gavin Moreno. The secretary was Riley Garrido. The treasurer was Rick Cassette, me. The historian was Brooklyn Smith. And we do not currently have a spirit and marketing officer. As of today, voting has closed at 5:00 PM, but the results will be released as soon as possible. That is all that we have for SCA. And next, for sports, our fall sports have all officially begun on Feb., sorry, I almost said February for some reason. On September 2nd, girls volleyball played against the other Rappahannock, at Rappahannock County High School. Unfortunately, I don't know the results of that game, but I'm sure they did well, and if they didn't, then they'll do well the next time. On September 4th, golf went against Central High School, Page County High School at the South, at the South Lails Golf Course. Sorry about that. Our middle school cross country went again, went against North Fork Middle School, Page County, and as far as I know, they're at Rappahannock County. Sorry, I read that wrong. And on September 4th, our varsity football played against the Model Secondary School for the Deaf, with our sideline cheer encouraging them as they went. Our quiz bowl season has also begun, and thankfully enough, former teacher Mr. Nazer was kind enough to come back and head up the quiz bowl team for yet another year. So we are very much looking forward to a great season. As for other things that have happened, that can't quite fall into any of the categories that I've already mentioned, we have our senior sun, we had our senior sunrise on September 6th, and also seniors got to paint their parking spots. That was on September 6th and September 7th. However, as I'm sure most of you noticed, there was, we had some pretty bad weather on, I believe, I believe the 7th. I might be wrong about that. But, so that might have led to a little bit of a hindrance, but all is well. The spots are now painted, so for those who did want to paint their parking spot, they have their own spot allotted to them. Also, our peer mentor activities have already blew after the school year, and peer mentorship is something that our school has done for quite a long time. Our upperclassmen, that is, the 11th or the 12th graders, offer to take an eighth grader under their wing, so to speak, to allow them to get acclimated to like high school culture, high school classes, schedules, so that they can transition smoothly through their eighth grade year, through their eighth grade year and officially get into their ninth grade year of high school, fully ready, fully prepared as much as one can be. So our peer mentor, they, their stuff has begun, they've had training, and they've already had a team building activity with their mentees, and as far as I know, that also went very well. So that is all our recent happenings. As for events that are going to be happening in the future, tomorrow we have the United States Navy coming to present at the, at the high school and the auditorium during flex. So that is open to any students who are interested in joining the armed forces after, after high school. So that will be happening. We have our trade of the month meeting this Thursday, September 11th. The plumber will be coming and talking about the experiences that he recorded in his book. And for those who are interested in the plumbing trade, how to become a plumber, what the career path is for that. And in addition, the Lions Club, or that is, members of it, will also be coming to speak and give their experience on how they can help for those who want to go into plumbing. Aside from that, we have our tri-county choir, have a tri-county choir, sorry. Rehearsals will be all day on Friday, September 12th, and then on Saturday, September 13th, there will be a performance, not just from Rappahannock County High School, but others, but other schools in the area, at Kettle Run High School at 12:00 PM. So I am very much looking forward to that. And aside from that, sorry, not aside, yes, aside from that, in other fine arts departments, our one act play is starting to gear up. This year's play will be Murder Me Always by Lee Miller. As far as I know, it's a murder mystery play, and auditions will be occurring on September 23rd with Miss Nutt after school in the auditorium. And after that, our homecoming season is rapidly approaching. We have a homecoming spirit week that's already planned out for the last week of September, I believe, from September 23rd all the way to September 26th. Of course, we don't have school on September 27th, but the football game, the homecoming game, will be on September 26th, and the homecoming dance itself will be on September 27th. This year's theme is Ace of Elegance, so it's sort of Las Vegas casino themed, so our students are very excited for that. I myself was quite excited when I heard the news, and that is all that I have for homecoming. As for other matters, our PSAT is rapidly coming up. That will occur in mid-October, and signups are due tomorrow. So for 10th or 11th graders who are interested in getting some more practice for their standardized testing, or for those who want to go for the NMSQT, that is, the National Merit, National, sorry, National Merit Scholarship Qualification Test, if I remember correctly, the PSAT is also qualifying grounds for that. It is also available for our ninth grade students who want to start their governor's school journey. So if they're interested in applying to Mountain Vista Governor's School, the PSAT is required for that, so that will be coming up very soon. And the last thing that I have, last but never least, is our National Honor Society. Our first meeting will be this Friday, September 12th, and our officer elections for our secretary, treasurer, and historian will occur on the same day. So we are very excited to jump into a new year with that, and we are very excited to see what the year has to hold. Okay, are there any questions?
Very good. It's interesting just to hear everything that's going on from your perspective.
Yes, that's true.
And I appreciate you bringing that to us, all the highlights of what's going on with students' life.
Absolutely. There's so many, there's so many things that are going on from day to day. Every time I look at my schedule, I'm like, oh, there's so many things going on, but I'm glad that sometimes I can clear it out and I can tell you all about this, that this, so the school can better benefit us as students and the community at large.
I think we need to realize also how much work it takes to get all that together.
Yeah.
Yes, very much so.
Can you go down to your list and tell, not all of it? Just the, the time for the trades assembly, I missed the time on that.
The trades assembly, that is, this Thursday, the trade of the month. As far as I know, that'll be during flex, so starting around 9:45 or 9:50 in the RCHS auditorium.
Around 9:45.
Mm-hmm.
In the auditorium?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes. Are there any further questions?
Another question, the National Honor Society timing event, we've got several National Honor Society members are not around during the beginning of the day. Is that going to be during flex also, or?
As far as I know, yes.
Okay, so, so that means that our governor's school students aren't able to attend those NHS meetings?
Typically, no, they are not, but there are copies of the agenda in the minutes that are available through our National Honor Society classroom and can also be requested from Ms. Cooper, our NHS advisor.
Okay, yeah, I mean, that's just something to pay attention to in the future, if we could figure out another timing, at least for some of the NHS members who, it is typical that almost of, that governor's school in NHS is like 100% overlap generally, and it could be a way in the future, as we think about making sure our governor's school students feel more included within the larger school family and to try to at least have some of those functions when they can actually come. That would be something to look, to look into for the future.
I will pass that on to Ms. Cooper, thank you very much. I think that's a great idea, actually.
Yeah, thanks.
Thanks.
Okay.
Any further questions?
Well, thank you very much, Ruth.
Thank you for having me.
Well done.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Grove, did you have opportunity to review the bills today?
I did, and everything looks to be in order. We're off to a good start.
Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So we're.
A motion from Ms. McCool is her second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Grove, if all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, close, no. It's ordered. Dr. Grimsley?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. The first item for the reports of the superintendent is actually a report from Family Futures. So I'll invite Ned Waterhouse, Executive Director for Family Futures, up to the podium.
Good evening.
Good evening, Ned.
Mr. Chairman, members of board, Dr. Grimsley. First of all, I'd like to note that Birgit is with me this evening, our chair, and really tonight, what I'd just like to do is update you very briefly and also thank you. And I'll start with the thanks, and we're really grateful to the partnership that we have with Rappahannock County Public Schools. We get support from all kinds of staff, and we get pragmatic support by you allowing us to have our program in the, in the school building. We also are appreciative of the interplay or the, the inputs, if you will, between the teaching staff who work in the building as well as Erin, our teacher, and I always forget Erin's last name because I have a daughter named Erin, yeah, Erin Cherry. But at any rate, we are really appreciative of that as well. Also, before I forget, Mr. Chairman, we really appreciated you showing up at our event Thursday, no, Saturday night, and we had a chance to talk with you, but also with a number of other people from the community, and that's invaluable. One of the things that is a real priority for us is getting our message out, but also and awareness of our program out into the community at large. And we were really grateful this year, when we were allowed to be here for back-to-school night, we saw a real uptick in the number of parents who stopped by and said hello and, and were interested in what we were talking about. We actually had to compete with the FAA, the small pony and the veered dragon, and, you know, that was tough stuff. So, but at any rate, we really feel like we're becoming more known to the community and that we're building a relationship with the parents and the students and also you all. So we're very appreciative and we thank you. This is our sixth, I'm sorry, we're beginning our seventh year for our program, so the children who started, the students who began as kindergartners at the inception of this program are now in sixth grade, and that's exciting for two reasons. One is, we're now beginning our foray into what's considered the middle school group, and that's a bit of a gear shift towards more independent choice and thought on the part of students, and we build further and further towards that. But it's also been an opportunity for us to, I sit and listen sometimes during class, but, or while the classes are changing, and the dialogue that's going on between kids at the, particularly up at the fifth and sixth grade level, is really surprising and really impressive in terms of their understanding of some of the financial literacy concepts that they're working with, but also the fact that they're thinking about it and applying it to their imaginations and their, their desires for their own futures, and seeing the connection between good financial decision-making and the opportunity to have more options when they grow up with respect to things that they might aspire to and also to, you know, programs that they might want to investigate for themselves, et cetera. So we just, and the other thing, I'll just put a kind of a community plug in, our, our other partner is Oakview National Bank, and they've been very, very committed to our program and to the public school system. And so the collaboration and the amount of, I don't know, energy that is created out of, and synergy that's created out of those three entities working together is, is pretty impressive. So again, thank you all. And also, one other thing, Shannon is unbelievable with the stuff that she helps us with and comes up with. The other day, we had an MOU meeting, we were talking about AI, and Shannon said, oh, yeah, well, I fool around with that somewhat, and she, she put together an impressive, you know, suggestion with respect to how we might track kids and progress and such things, and, you know, sent it to me and said, here you go. So we really can't discount Dr. Grimsley's impact on the program and her impact in general on what happens with this wonderful school system and the educational initiatives that are, this is just one of them, so.
It's a wonderful program, Ned, and we are very fortunate that it's here, and it's great to hear that the kids are talking, you've heard them talking.
Yeah.
Because I was telling someone, and maybe you, this past weekend, that, you know, Commit to Be Fit came in years ago, I don't know how long, but it's changed the culture, right? And, and Family Futures is doing the same thing, and you're seeing it already. Students are talking about it, and that's ridiculous. They're talking about what these accounts mean. I had a chance to talk to Jason, Jason, I think.
Yep, Jason Brady from Oakview.
Yeah, Oakview. And he was telling me, you know, he, everything's very alias for him, they're just account numbers, he doesn't know anything, right?
Right, right.
And he delivers these reports to the school where I guess they're deconflicted to be distributed to the right folks, right?
The quarterly reports.
I was just picturing, you know, kindergarten year, pretty easy delivery, manila envelope, you know? But that, that is, yeah, how big is that stack as it's coming in? And then those kids are talking about that, and they're taking it home at their dinner table, and it's changing a conversation at the home, and so there's a lot of forethought that never would have occurred about their futures, which, you know, that's why we, we're so fortunate to have a program here, and I appreciate what you all are doing.
I forgot to mention two quick stats, and that is, for the year that we just closed for 2024, we ended with about 420 student accounts in total, some, a few of which are inactive because kids have moved. But $169,000 worth of deposits and interest, and so each year it's, it's growing, and the enhancements, as we call them, which is what the kids have the opportunity to earn over the course of years, are starting to grow and grow and grow, so it's, it's pretty interesting.
When a child leaves our, our county, school system, what happens with that account? It just sits?
But, well, it essentially is frozen, and our accounting system notes when kids are, when we find out that a student has gone inactive, meaning that they've moved out of the, out of the system, that information is kind of captured and recorded, and in the event that the student returns, all of that is credited to the student, and they pick up there and go on. Now, they don't have a chance to earn the in-between time, but, yeah. And the other thing that's really important here, as long as you open the door for this, this little tidbit.
I guess I did. I did not negotiate this beforehand.
No. The other thing that is important for everyone to be aware of, and we've made parents aware of it and all in writing and whatnot, but students have to either graduate specifically from Rappahannock County Public Schools or have to earn the, the equivalency, graduate equivalency, in order to essentially qualify for that money. So.
Very reasonable, very reasonable. Great program. We're blessed to have it here.
It's a great school system. It's, it's no, it's no happenstance. It, a lot of great things are growing here. They really are. Thank you all.
Any other questions for Ned? Let him go. Thanks, thanks for coming, thanks for sharing with us.
Thank you so much. Thanks. Item 4.2 really isn't big, it's more of the vendors that are under contract this year. We don't rebid our contract, I think, until next year, but this is a list, so that's why there's not a vote on it. Same vendors as we usually go with. And then we have switched over, I mentioned this last month, I believe, the new Link Connect system rather than the K-12 payments system, is the new software for the food service. Even though we have free breakfast and lunch, that, all the extras, al card items and things like that do require having those accounts, so that's the new system. I found it as a parent to be much more user-friendly than the other one. But yet to be seen as more people are using.
So parents can just, can they just give you a credit card number and you put it in, or do they have to send a check?
They do it themselves.
Or they do it themselves?
They can do it themselves with their own account. What's nice, too, if you have multiple children, like I have a child that never, you know, gets anything in the cafeteria, so that account stays, so, ooh, my other child is running short, I can transfer the funds really nice and easy between children, that's nice. Or my own account, staff account. Yes, we can do it on the, the last one, but, so that's really helpful. Now, parents do have the option, they can send in money with their child to the cafeteria accounts, and they can take a point of service as well, so.
Cool.
All right, item 4.3, REACH Program Evaluation. I'm going to invite Leah Childress to the podium, our external evaluator from Collective Progress, who has been running our very objective and informative evaluation of our REACH program. It has so many tendrils, and it's tough to capture everything, but Leah does an incredible job of really keeping everything focused on the goals and bringing back feedback that's usable. So without further ado, Leah, I'll bring up your presentation.
All right, thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, members of the board, and Dr. Grimsley, for the opportunity to be here and to share a little bit about the first year of the REACH evaluation. So I'll wait just a second while the slide, no worries.
Stalling, stalling, it didn't pop up.
Well, I'll just start with some of the intro, you don't need the, the first slide. So I thought I'd begin with just a quick introduction and about me and my background, so folks understand why I'm here. So my name is Leah Childress. I received my PhD and my college from the University of Michigan in 2011, and since then have been doing applied social science research and program evaluation primarily in the education and human service sectors. So, you know, some examples of education-related projects are evaluating a school-based mindfulness program for high school students to examine the impact of yoga and mindfulness on adolescent social and emotional and cognitive development. I've also worked with the Calver now Rural Education Network to learn a bit more about rural educators' needs and priorities. I spent quite a few years evaluating federally funded grant programs at two-year colleges, so at community and technical colleges, looking at the role of wraparound student supports and outcomes related to student success, completion, career pathways, faculty credentials, et cetera. So kind of have a broad perspective, have some experience in K-12, some in higher ed, some in early education. So also recently have been doing a lot of work related to something called a whole-family approach, which is a really intentional, or you could call it two-gen as well, kind of an intentional set of robust partnerships between educational institutions, human service agencies, and community programs to really think about how to meet the needs of the entire family, so both children, student, in this case, students, and adults simultaneously. So that's just a little bit about my background. And also, before we jump in, I want to make sure to acknowledge the tremendous partnership of this district during this first year of the REACH evaluation. It has been such a privilege to work with the district and the building leadership and members of the board on this project. I think, you know, evaluation is not particularly easy or comfortable, and many organizations really do shy away from the kind of robust data collection and learning that's taken place this past year. So I think it's just a real testament to this district's commitment to the well-being and success of all the students, the employees, and the family members in this community, that this has been so embraced and that there have been so many wonderful people who have engaged in really meaningful ways with this process. So I just wanted to make sure to acknowledge that and recognize that it really is a tremendous example of the dedication to students and their families. And of course, the other important group that I need to make sure to acknowledge is all the participants from the is all the participants from the first year. So this wouldn't be possible without the time and the knowledge and the expertise that many people have shared, either in their survey responses or interview participation. So I want to thank everyone who participated in some capacity because it really, this this learning wouldn't be possible without their engagement. So a huge thank you to everyone who participated. Okay, that was my long-winded intro and now we can jump in. So I am not going to spend very much time talking about the initiative itself. I think, if I understand correctly, you all have some information about the program that was prepared by one of the funders. So we'll just kind of gloss over that. I will spend some time describing the evaluation and some of the methods. And then we'll we'll talk about some findings and some kind of things that, you know, possible next steps to consider in year two of the the initiative. So we'll go ahead and jump ahead. Thank you. So for those who are not familiar with this initiative, REACH stands for Rural Education and Community Health. It's a three-year initiative funded by multiple sources that is really dedicated to supporting, creating a supportive learning environment for all students and employees, so really just supporting students and employees. Okay, go ahead. So this slide lists some of the key goals of the initiative, which are to strengthen the district's ability to meet students' mental health needs and support student well-being, to enhance teacher and staff's professional development and support to improve student and employee sense of belonging and perceptions of RCPS climate, to increase excitement about learning and engagement in the classroom, and to boost teacher and staff morale and retention. So a lot of things, but really important and admirable to have, you know, taken this initiative on and really pursued some of the activities. So and so, like I said, I won't spend a lot of time talking about the the many activities that comprise the overall initiative. But I do want to highlight two, because these are the two kind of focal areas for the evaluation. So thinking about the mental health supports for students, as, you know, that first goal acknowledged, and also professional development and support for employees. So there are so many other incredible supports and services and initiatives happening in this district. And this is just one of the many examples of, you know, how the commitment to student well-being and student success and employee well-being is being manifested. So I believe you have learned a bit about the services and the supports that are available in the mental health realm and also this partnership with Center for Inspired Teaching that's really creating some additional opportunities for employees. Okay, so now we'll really get into the evaluation. So in order to track progress towards the goals that were listed a few slides earlier, one of the funders contracted with Collective Progress to conduct an external implementation and outcomes evaluation just to be able to to learn a little bit more about that whole process. So this is a multi-year mixed methods evaluation. It integrates interview, survey, administrative data to really kind of capture and better understand student, employee and family perspectives and outcomes and change over time. So the evaluation has kind of four core components. The first is to document and assess the implementation, primarily in this case of those two key activities that were listed, the mental health supports and the professional development. So because if we we aren't really monitoring implementation, it becomes harder to understand the outcome and also a little harder to achieve the outcome if it turns out that the implementation might need a little extra kind of support. So collecting and analyzing baseline data, that's what this year was primarily about, as well as thinking about implementation of the initial activities. And then using those baseline findings to really identify some areas of strength, so really highlight the strengths, but also potentially find areas of growth or potential areas for additional focus to help really move towards attainment of those Reach goals. And then finally, gathering annual data to measure progress over time and change over time. So this is a multi-year project, so there will be survey administration in years two and three and then also another round of interviews toward the end. And we'll talk on the, I think, the next slide about the actual data. Oh, actually, you can go ahead. So really, today, we'll just talk about the baseline data and analysis and some of those potential areas for focus in year two. All right, so this slide is, it's a lot. There's a, there's a lot that we did in the first year. So in partnership with the district, Collective Progress developed multiple survey tools and interview protocols to really kind of get a holistic sense. So incorporating feedback from students, from employees and families to really kind of triangulate and and capture all the different voices of the 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 different groups that make up the school community. So we began in November 2024 with an anonymous online survey for high school students. And I'll just make a note that that we are only administering surveys for high school students, not younger students, for a range of reasons. Many of that focused around age and just ethics. And and then in January 2024, a subset of employees participated in some interviews. In April 2025, there was an anonymous online survey available for employees. So employees were invited to share their feedback in that form. And then also at the same time, school board members were invited to participate in interviews. And finally, family members were invited to share their feedback in a survey, an online anonymous survey that was administered in August, just recently. So lots of feedback, a few important notes I'd like to make here, though, before we move ahead. One is that when we move into the slides where we're looking at actual numbers and data, you'll see that the number of responses to individual survey items varies. So you see a total number of participants here for each data collection activity. But as we look at the other slides, you'll see a little N equals and then a number, and that number refers to the number of responses for a particular question. Okay, thanks. So as I mentioned, lots of data, you just saw that we gathered a lot. So I I want to make sure that we emphasize that there are so many strengths in this district. But because of time, you know, we can't go through everything. And so this presentation is primarily focused on some of the the areas for growth and potential areas to to spend some additional attention in year two. So we'll start with some of those strengths because they're super important to highlight. But I just wanted to emphasize that, you know, there is a kind of actionable slant to the slides tonight. So starting with the strengths. So in terms of those first two goals, the expansion of mental health support for students and enhancing professional support for employees, implementation assessment from the first year really found that these have been implemented as intended. There really are expanded mental health supports. I believe you received a pretty detailed presentation recently about some of those many services and resources. And also, the partnership with Center for Inspired Teaching has had a really successful start. So that was implemented and continues to be revised to to really best meet the needs of the students and employees in this district. So another really strong theme that emerged in all the the survey and interview findings is that this small community is a huge strength. So many people spoke to how important they find the sort of family nature of the district. Many people use the word family when they talk about the the district and how much they value the relationships they're able to build given that small community, both with their colleagues, with the students. So it's a real gift to have that kind of small, close-knit community. And it also feeds into a lot of positive reflections about employee experience for employees. And we'll kind of, we can go ahead and move into some, oh, actually, we'll talk first about this slide that kind of was the RCPS family, given that term that was used so frequently. So this slide really illustrates some of the personal connections that people may have in the community. So employees, the percentages on this slide reflect employee survey responses. So 41% of employee survey respondents attended RCPS as a student. 62% of employee survey respondents have children who are current or former RCPS students. 55% of employee survey respondents have spent their education career here at RCPS and have not actually worked in education elsewhere. So there's a really strong personal connection to this community and that is a real asset and strength and something that that should be celebrated. The right side of the screen just illustrates, those bubbles show kind of the different roles that are reflected by the employee survey responses. So among the respondents, 54% identified as classroom instructors and 37% identified as student support staff or administration. So another smaller percentage identified as either being part of facilities or transportation teams. So now we'll really look at a few slides that illustrate the strengths, except I'm gonna also, I don't have them in front of me, so I'm just, you know, kind of being reminded as we go through. So I do want to ground everyone in what the numbers mean. So as we look at the actual percentages, survey respondents were invited to share their level of agreement, so how strongly they either disagree or agree, with a range of statements. So we can go one more slide. And so we're focusing today on the percentages that agree or strongly agree. So when you see a percentage, that's what that reflects, is the the percentage of respondents that agree or strongly agree with a particular statement. So I'm also going to share means, so the means will be on the slides because that's really important. So the mean or average gives a sense of kind of, you know, where the bulk of their responses may have been. But the percentage, I think, is helpful for people who may not be so into thinking about means. And it's also just a lot harder to see variation in means. So a mean is what will be used for the statistical analyses, to look at change over time and to look at any sort of group differences. But for our purposes, we'll kind of just talk about the percentages. So this slide, I think, illustrates one of the biggest strengths of the district, which is that, you know, basically every single person who completed the employee survey says that they really care about other adults of the district. So they, 96% agree or strongly agree that they care about other adults. And that's really tremendous, particularly given, you know, the world of education right now. So that that speaks to what I already mentioned, that many respondents highlighted how valuable it is to have a close, small community with strong relationships with their peers. So similarly, 85%, the vast majority of employee survey respondents agreed or strongly agree that they like working at RCPS, which is another wonderful attribute of the district. And, you know, they highlighted again appreciating relationships they have as well as the autonomy that can come from working in a smaller district, the ability to really have a lot of agency over what they're doing is a really valuable part of work. So, you know, many strengths, but as with all organizations, there are areas that emerge as potential areas for focus moving forward and and room for growth. So these three areas that I've called areas for growth kind of center around climate and belonging, the learning experience, and then strategic planning and communication. So when we move through each of these areas, I'll share some high-level findings, statements, and then move through a few slides that have some actual numbers and data that informed those high-level statements. But again, because we just don't have time to go through the, you know, hundreds of survey items and responses, it's a pretty thin slice. So but hopefully, it will be useful enough for you all to kind of reflect on and incorporate as you move forward. So so starting with climate and belonging, obviously, that includes content related to belonging and inclusion. It also addresses relationships, perception perceptions of relationships and behavior. So overall, as we already talked about, the small, close community, family-like community is a big strength and an asset. But it also, I think, as as many folks who might work in a small community know, it can occasionally feel like a challenge or introduce some challenges. So I'll circle back to that in just a moment. But another finding that emerged is really consistent with just human nature. So respondents did tend to say that they felt they cared about others more than they perceived others caring about them. So I think we all can resonate with that. So the the data just aligned with that and we'll talk a little bit about that on one of the slides. And then some survey and interview participants did express concerns about some perceived resistance to different ideas, approaches or people, and also some perceived bullying and occasionally discriminatory behavior. So these are kind of the areas where, you know, that additional focus will be important and we'll we'll talk a little more. But related to the small community, it emerged that there there was, you know, this potential that within that small, tight-knit community, that some folks may not feel as welcome or may not feel like their perspective or their approach is embraced in the same way. So there also, I think, was some perception that the the kind of personal relationships that are just a natural part of living and working in a small community, that that there was a perception that maybe occasionally those personal relationships could influence professional decisions or treatment of students. So just having, bringing in some of the personal into the professional in ways that some some individuals did express some questions and concerns about. So some possible next steps might be really thinking about, you know, I'm I'm aware that that you all have a student code of conduct. So it might be useful to think about some of the the kind of entire level of the district, whether there is some clarity around expectations around behavior for all. So potentially even a an employee code of conduct, if that doesn't already exist, that could accompany a student code of conduct just to to outline some of the the hopes and aspirations for the kind of culture and climate of welcoming that that people might hope to embrace as part of this Reach initiative. So another possibility is that, you know, it could be useful for the school board to consider whether there are some resources that might support, you know, navigating what is just a really complex interpersonal reality of living and working and overseeing a school district in a small rural community. So there may be some supports that could be available for school board and district members to think about. So those are just kind of some two thoughts that we'll circle back to towards the end. So now we can go ahead. Okay, so this slide is our first, like, real data point, which I realize I don't know how many minutes we are. So thank you for, everyone, for bearing with this what will probably feel like a long presentation. So this is illustrating the percentage of employees and high school students who agree or strongly agree with the statement, I feel like I belong. So we see that the the majority of employees agree that they feel like they belong, which is fantastic. A really wonderful finding. And we see that, I think, you know, consistent with the developmental stage of adolescence, that maybe fewer, a smaller percentage of high school students are agreeing that they feel like they belong. So of course, you know, I think that is a sort of normal developmental finding, but also just something to flag and to think about as part of this establishing a culture of, you know, welcome and inclusion. So one thing that I will note before we jump in, and we just don't have time to go into all these details, but we did examine some, we did disaggregate by some groups and examined some group differences across all the different surveys. So what I'm gonna share now just refers to employee survey responses. So we looked at whether there might be any different responses based on whether employees had either worked elsewhere for a period of time or had only worked at RCPS, or if they identified as administration or student support staff versus classroom instructors, and then also kind of tenure. So did a binary split of kind of looking at whether there's any difference between those who've worked at RCPS for eight years or more or seven years or fewer. And so there were some some kind of trends, in particular, the differences between those who may have had professional experience elsewhere and those who have worked only at RCPS. With those who've worked only at RCPS, kind of almost consistently throughout each item, demonstrating a slightly more favorable perspective of things. So something to consider, you know, as a district about, you know, that probably requires some more exploration from the evaluation perspective, but is just a finding to to be mindful of. And then also somewhat more favorable among student support staff and administration on certain items than classroom instructors. And similarly, those who've worked at RCPS longer and those who have been here for seven years or fewer. So we can move ahead. I didn't, I didn't want to take too much time, but I wanted to illustrate that there are some different patterns. So employees had the opportunity to share some perspectives about employee relationships. And certainly, the majority really perceive that adults treat each other with respect, which is fantastic. But as I mentioned, there's this tendency for us to think that we care about others more than others care about us. And that's somewhat reflected here with that middle item, with only 58% saying they feel supported by their adults and 54% agreeing or strongly agreeing that they trust other adults. In contrast to that 96% that we saw a few slides ago, that said they really care about other adults. So something to be mindful of and worth exploring more about what might be driving some of that, particularly the 54%. But it also, I think, relates to this potential utility of thinking about whether there's the the possibility of setting some more clear expectations around behavior and openness to to difference and whether that might be part of it. So students also had the opportunity to to share their perspectives on relationships and. and, you know, how they feel about others and whether they feel that others care about them. And so, you know, we can see that a smaller percentage here, thirty-five percent of students agreed or strongly agree that they feel others care about them, that other students care about them. So again, I think that's probably not surprising developmentally, what's going on in adolescents, but it is something that I know this district has a really strong focus and is thinking a lot about, you know, how to introduce services and supports to really create a community among the students that, you know, is one that's kind and inclusive. So just now, I think you have some additional data to, that just really affirms some of the decisions you've already been making about how to address and support student needs. And so this is our first slide with some findings from the family survey. So this one, I think, is, you know, particularly important one to be mindful of, that only thirty-nine percent of the family survey respondents agreed or strongly agreed that students treat each other with respect. So something is happening where students may be reporting or family members may be observing situations that they feel somewhat concerned about. And this is an area where there was a fair bit of feedback about concerns around bullying, possibly even that some preferential treatment of students that could allow bullying to continue. So, so really thinking about, you know, how to support, and again, this relates to the services and the strategies that you already are thinking about, and I know, I think you all learned about some of those recently, the tier-one supports designed to support, you know, student self-regulation and address bullying, and again, just this theme of a culture of kindness among students. So there were some concerns expressed among family survey respondents. Also, employee survey respondents acknowledged that they do observe some, you know, difficult behavior at times and that classroom instructors in particular may benefit from a little additional support in thinking about how to navigate potential disruptive behavior in the classroom. Okay. So that was a lot for that room. Then we'll talk a little bit about learning experience, which relates to the environment, kind of attitudes and excitement about learning and classroom experience. So overall, kind of these general findings are that in, in general, employees tend to have more positive perceptions of some aspects of learning experience than students and families, that high school students want to learn, but that many report lower levels of excitement about school or engagement in the classroom. And really, this last bullet point is essential. These findings are consistent with national trends. So this district is not alone. It may be exceptional in the fact that it is actually engaging with some of these data and really thinking about how to use data to inform some decisions, but not alone. And so that's just a really important point to make. So given that one of the key goals, if you were to sort of group all of those discrete goals that were presented on an earlier slide into one, it is to create a supportive learning environment. So part of understanding whether people feel that there is a supportive learning environment was giving the employee survey respondents an opportunity to define that for themselves and then, you know, answer some questions about it. So I thought I'd just share, because I think these are really useful statements. They really kind of succinctly capture a lot of aspects of a supportive learning environment. So the employee survey respondents defined a supportive learning environment for students as one in which students feel safe, respected, and valued, in which students are empowered to try new things and challenge themselves, in which both academic and social emotional growth are prioritized, in which students' learning needs are met, adults set clear expectations and hold students accountable, and adults model inclusion and positive relationships. So, you know, a lot of things, but, but all important. And in thinking about a supportive learning environment for employees, the respondents shared that this would be one in which employees feel respected, valued, and heard, in which employees have opportunities for professional development and learning, in which leaders model open and transparent communication, and is a space that feels collaborative and supportive and is inclusive of diverse perspectives. So they answered these questions and then had the opportunity to reflect on whether they feel, or, you know, how strongly they agree or disagree with the statement, "RCPS provides a supportive learning environment for all faculty and staff." And so we see that only around fifty percent were agreeing or strongly agreeing, which really just illustrates that there might be some areas that would benefit from additional attention. And so in this next year, doing a little bit of exploration to learn more about what might be driving this response and understanding which areas kind of rise to the surface for employees could be useful. And then, so similarly, both employees and family members, granted, family members did not have the opportunity to define supportive learning environment, but based on whatever their definition was, we see that sixty-five percent of the employee survey respondents agree or strongly agree that RCPS provides a supportive learning environment for all students, and fifty-six percent of family members. And so something that family members did have the opportunity to do was provide a thorough bit of feedback. They had a few options for open-ended questions towards the end, and a number of really great suggestions emerged. So it could be really useful to reflect on the feedback that they shared and review those responses in thinking about what some goals or strategies could be moving forward. So, and this is really, I think, an area that did emerge as potentially the priority area of focus, is kind of learning more about both employee and student perceptions and family perceptions of the learning experience. So we see here that actually fewer than fifty percent of the employee survey respondents agreed or strongly agreed that students are engaged in classroom lessons, that they come ready to learn, or that they are excited about learning. But I think this also just illustrates, again, the forward-thinking nature of the district in pursuing this reach initiative and establishing the partnership with the Center for Inspired Teaching, because the Center for Inspired Teaching really is committed and dedicated, their entire purpose is helping people find joy and excitement in learning. So it's about identifying practices, both for employees and students, to really build that joy and engagement. So, so it's kind of, you know, this is an area for growth, but it also just affirms the importance of decisions the district has already made to support its staff and its students. So high school students also have an opportunity to respond to some questions about their experience of learning, and this one probably for most people would, you would look at and think, wow, that's like not, not the, that's the numbers we want to see. But I want to emphasize again that this is so consistent with what is going on in this country in terms of how students feel about education. So this slide shows that, yes, around fifty percent want to learn as much as they can, but that only around twenty-five percent are agreeing that they feel interested when they're in class. And again, this is just the high school students. So research really shows that there is a decrease in excitement and engagement in school as you move from elementary school to high school. So I do imagine if we were to, say, survey second graders, we would see a very, you know, obviously a very different kind of survey, but it would be a very different set of findings, too. So that is consistent with national research, and also the national surveys right now are showing exactly this, that only around, you know, around seventy-five percent of students have not super favorable perceptions of what's going on in their school. So it's just a moment in history where really thinking carefully about excitement around learning, engagement in learning is a big kind of need in the world of education, because obviously you already have many needs, it is a very hard job. So, but this does suggest that here as well is an area of focus. So finally, you know, usually what happens in evaluations is there's something that actually doesn't necessarily obviously relate to the, the goals of the project, but that might actually help with the implementation and ultimate success. So this last area of potential, you know, potential area for growth or potential area for additional attention relates to strategic planning and communication. And so kind of having a bit to do with goal alignment, implementation, and dissemination and engagement of different groups within the school community. So overall, the, the findings suggest that there's actually a little less familiarity, so there's somewhat limited familiarity with some of the initiatives among survey and interview participants, and a bit of uncertainty about how some initiatives may align with district goals. There's also some concern among survey and interview participants about implementation follow-through of some of these initiatives. And finally, there was a bit of concern or lower levels of, you know, agreeing or strongly agreeing among family survey respondents when responding to questions about family engagement and communication with families. So we'll look at a few slides related to this. So this slide just illustrates that the dark blue bar is the employee survey respondents, the light blue bars are family survey respondents. So you can see that the dark blue bars go up. So employee survey respondents may not have a lot of familiarity with the reach initiative, which does make sense because there are different activities that maybe those discrete activities are what is more familiar to those respondents. But that is, they are responding to questions about the comprehensive plan, multi-tiered system of supports, or mental health supports for students. There is increasing familiarity among the employee survey respondents. However, among the family members, there's pretty low levels across all items. So not a lot of familiarity, and I should note, this is the one slide where the response scale is not strongly disagreed or strongly agree. It is not at all familiar to very familiar. So this slide is showing the familiar and very familiar. So, so there is some room there to sort of think about the communication with families. It's okay, we can stay here. So related to that, the, the employee survey responses suggest that there, there may also be some room to grow in thinking about how communication about different initiatives is shared with employees and building some kind of trust in the follow-through. And so I think one of the challenges of being a small district and having so many incredible services and initiatives and supports is that it, it can be hard to kind of oversee all of those. And so that there was some concern among some respondents that perhaps it's just the number that makes it hard both to sort of recognize what's happening from the employee perspective and the, the family perspective. And so perhaps there is some alignment, and that's where that term goal alignment of thinking about how to strategically communicate how the different initiatives align with those core goals, just to help build some familiarity. But also that there may be some utility, and again, thinking about the strategic planning or, or management of the different pieces to, to really address this concern. But this is also one that just some additional exploration would be necessary to really understand what it is that, that folks are thinking about when they responded, or were thinking about when they responded to this question. And then, so finally, family perceptions of RCPS communication. So I guess I'll just start, well, we'll read the numbers, then I'll, I'll share some information about just research literature in general. But, so we see that among the family survey respondents, fewer than fifty percent were agreeing or strongly agreeing that RCPS explains how family members can work with teacher, staff, and administrators to support students, that RCPS helps families feel involved in their child, child learning, that RCPS helps me understand what my child is doing and learning each year. And then to the right are really the kind of lowest levels of agreement, which is around kind of understanding how decisions are made. So, so there is, I think, a potential need to really think about how to help the family members understand why things are happening, how things are happening, and, you know, that kind of feeds into this sort of strategic communication. So, so I think now we'll shift to just talk about research in general. I imagine everyone in this room is familiar with the fact that there's really robust research on the essential role of family engagement in student learning and student success, and that that's sort of something that's been, you know, for years, kind of a, a repeated sort of tried and true finding that, that schools, you know, when schools, families, and community groups work together to support learning, children tend to do better in school, they tend to stay in school longer, and they tend to like school more. And there is some research that also suggests that, you know, schools with strong family engagement are ten times more likely to improve student outcomes. So really thinking about how to kind of embrace that family role and support the family in being the co, you know, supporters of learning might be an important place to, to center some attention. And so another finding that is not shown in the slide is that around fifty percent of the family survey respondents said they would like to be more involved with RCPS. So you have a body of family members who are, you know, available and interested in, in being more involved. And so it may be useful to revisit the family engagement plan that currently exists and to think about whether there could be resources to, you know, bring in an individual who could have some hours that's really, that are really dedicated to family engagement. So I think one of the challenges, and this exists in the evaluation world, too, is that to, to really meaningfully engage the people with lived experience, it does take time and it takes resources. So figuring out how to support that kind of engagement might require some, some creative thinking about how to have that time and, and the hours available. But ensuring kind of the continued family input in any sort of revisiting of the plan, whether that's a family advisory committee or just kind of working with family volunteers in some other capacity. So those are, I think, the end of the data slides. So thank you, everyone, for making it this far. And before I summarize everything, I just want to reiterate that the, the recommendations that you're about to see are already being addressed in many different ways by services and programs that are happening in this district, just that these findings, these data kind of provide a baseline and also affirmation of some of the decisions that you've already made and the importance of those decisions. So within the strategic, strategic planning and communication realm, you know, some, some possible next steps to consider could be thinking about how to align the program, services, and supports around a small number of priority goals, and then establish a kind of an implementation, implementation management plan to, to really support and clarify how that follow-through is happening. So people can kind of readily say, oh, yes, I understand that, and I see how these different activities are related and how they're happening. And also possibly developing a kind of strategic communication plan that could help employees and families understand the overall goals. And finally, as we just, I just sort of was talking about, the considering establishing or revisiting the family engagement plan in partnership with family volunteers and family representation. So in terms of the learning experience, I think, you know, one thing that the district could do is just continue to highlight even more, perhaps, the role of the Center for Inspired Teaching in helping build a, a set of experiences for employees and for students that really help establish that love of learning and excitement about the learning process and engagement in the classroom. And also continuing to gather some more feedback about, you know, which aspects of the learning environment might benefit from additional attention in terms of the supportive learning environment for employees. And then finally, in terms of climate and belonging, so, you know, I already acknowledged this earlier, but thinking about whether there might be something, we could call it a professional code of conduct, but something that could accompany the student code of conduct, it really establishes clear expectations for behavior at all levels. So not just students, but for everyone that is part of the system to help all feel included and welcome. And then just continue what we're already doing to prioritize strategies and tier-one services that are designed to address bullying, support self-regulation among students, and build a student culture of kindness. And then finally, possibly consider whether there might be additional supports for classroom instructors to help address situations of disruptive behavior and, and reduce some of the burnout that might kind of correspond with some of those challenges that emerge in the classroom setting. And that is it. Wow, you all made it. I don't think that clock works. I have no idea.
It's definitely not like that.
So thank you again, the board members and Dr. Grimsley, for the opportunity to be here, and again, thank you for just a tremendous partnership. It's really been such a privilege to, to be part of this project. So if anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to take questions or reactions or...
This is a lot.
It's a lot.
This is a lot. How many pages was the, was this final report?
Well, truthfully, the, there was an interim report that didn't have the family survey findings because of the timing, so it would probably be longer than, than it was. I don't even remember how long the, sort of, first go.
Overwhelming. That we have about five years in.
Yes, that's the, that, thank you, Mr. Gro, for acknowledging that, because I think that, you know, the longer grant... that, you know, the longer grant cycles are really essential. Change is not instantaneous, and it takes time.
Takes a little bit of time, a little bit of this, a little bit of that.
Absolutely.
You know, I was noticing the time of the school year that different groups were focused on, and I was thinking, oh, yeah, I might think that in November. Oh, yeah, in April, I'm pretty washed out, you know? I don't, so I only slightly agree now, or I might have agreed in December. That's so, those types of things, probably, you know, multiple samples during the year. People change perspectives during the year as they find out more things too. Also, I was wondering about the free text, so the anonymous feedback. Is that something that you have access to, to share? I mean...
Yes, and I haven't, I haven't even prepared a summary document from the family survey findings because the survey just closed a few weeks ago. But yes, absolutely, those can be, there aren't really any identifiers in the responses, but I'm going to kind of clean up everything that could possibly be an identifier, and then, yes, the feedback would be available, for sure.
Yeah.
I'd like to read through all of it. I just, it's fascinating.
I don't, I don't really want to read through all of them.
I understand. But Mr. Grob, thank you for mentioning the timing, because that's a really important detail and astute to note that. And we had talked about whether to try to have everyone at the same time, and the original goal was, you know, let's try to check in with students as early as possible, thinking that there might then be an end-of-year survey. But given, again, the rate of change is just, you know, as you're implementing something new, that we instead just decided to stick with doing at the same time for the next two years.
And it's fine, it's just good for us to recognize that it probably has an influence on things, too.
Absolutely.
People are burned out. You get to April, you're just, can I survive another month? So there's that. And then from the student perspective, they develop relationships all year long, you know, and things change for them. And they're probably more comfortable later in the semester than they are early in the semester. And so, you know, all of those things affect, because this organism is dynamic. So anyway, it'd still be interesting to read at some point.
Yeah, I'm just curious, are you comfortable that we have...
Hey, Rachel.
Rachel, we can't make out.
I think you're gonna have to type. Is there a chat capability where you can type kind of your... Yeah, I'm sorry, it's so broken. Thank, sorry, sorry. It's so broken, we can't make a sentence. But if you could type, Shannon could read it to us.
Yes. But yes, while we're reading, any other questions?
Any other questions?
Well, I was gonna bring up the importance, these are things that we have known for a while in the profession that schools are struggling with. The brain science that we're talking about, we have known for a long time. Teachers are competing with this. There's no amount of dopamine in the classroom that's gonna replace what they're getting in this way. So teachers are, you know, struggling and frustrated with some of that, too. You have to be very engaging to get those engagement numbers up, and that's something we know. But the impact of engaged learners in the classroom cannot be ignored. In any way, we can move that needle. Now, we've implemented a lot of different things to address these pieces that we knew, in our strategic plan and our comprehensive plan, road to remarkable, and the REACH initiative really does capture all of those pieces. So to communicate the alignment is gonna be very important this year as we're rolling this out. But the baseline data, and that's what I keep saying, it's baseline, we are always in a continuous state of improvement, always. We have continuous school improvement plans. I got a secret for you, we are not perfect. Things aren't perfect in every classroom. But, and that's important to know, because we have to strategically move that needle from year to year. Now we have a consistent metric to do that around these initiatives. That's gonna be very, very useful, and we can strategically capture that and...
Without a baseline, you have nothing to dovetail to.
Right, right.
You have nothing to move forward with, and I think this is a perfect way to begin putting the two together, the comprehensive plan and this activity, to move forward. For teachers, for parents, for citizens? I mean, I talk to citizens all the time, and they are constantly asking how kids are surviving all the interruptions that they have to learn. And it's a hard question to answer.
It is, and what we found too, in digging through this data as an administrative team, because we have to get very granular and get into the pieces of these two and understand, like, what would cause a perceived needs response to something? Because it is perceived needs. When we see a disparity between perceived needs and what we know to be true in actual data indications, that then it is communication, comes down to communication and engagement. So there's something there we need to focus on. So, and Rachel's saying here, do we have a formal community engagement plan? So having one that's more, and if you have to ask that question, then we need to do a better job of saying this, so that right there shows that we have areas, but we need to know what those are and how that would be helpful to our families. So now, how we approach engagement, what would be engaging? And Holly's communications team that is established each year, she does a lot of work trying to understand, how can we get information to families that makes sense? We have all of these events, we have all these committees and advisories and all these things, and we really struggle to get attendance. So I hear wanting to be involved, but then how can we involve you more?
Right now, it's one way.
It's, so how can we, and we're so interested in that question, and so is every other superintendent in every other school district that I'm talking to, too, is how do we get...
Parent responses will be vital, I think, in giving the board and Shannon the opportunity to find what it is that parents and citizens really think they need.
Well, and that's what we plan to do with these things, too, is as we get more information, we have continuous monitoring tools. We will bring consistent summaries to the board to say, here's the things that we're finding out, here's the strategies that we're implementing, and then get your ideas, too, and feedback from the folks you represent, too. So this will be constant, and then the metric that we're creating in the evaluation plan will be similar throughout the few years of the rollout of the implementation. So we'll actually have consistent data points to measure against those things. Rachel is saying it'd be a good thing for the school board to think about student-led conferences. And we used to have a volunteer coordinator hired by the school. That would be great, and to have more ways for people to help and feel valued for their skills.
We did, it was a long time ago when we had a volunteer coordinator position that we filled, but it was a very effective position. I remember it well, and...
Was that just at the elementary school? Probably.
Yeah, and in the time, if you remember, we didn't have all the tools we do for engagement that are, you know, more virtual. We had the Tuesday folders and the Tuesday cans and the things where we needed all hands on deck on certain days of the week, so there were a massive amount of volunteers that had to come in for that, those type of things. So when we have these bigger events around, even athletic events, we need support there, and we're asking principals, too, to give us more information about volunteer opportunities.
Right. But the volunteer coordinator wasn't a person who, their purpose was to engage parents and get them integrated, you know, that was the purpose, so, but it was a paid position, from what I remember.
It was, and the process now, and Rachel's saying this, too, we recently have had a few re-volunteers who were with Headwaters Reprogram reach out for the elementary school and are excited to be engaged, which they are, and there's a process that Karen Ellis is heading up in HR to streamline and make things more clear and build a repository of volunteers to be placed in the school. So we'll be talking about that as we move along, too, but we're getting processes in place to make it easier and accessible for volunteering, because you have different types of volunteers, right? I'll show up to concessions one night and help with that, or I really want to work intensive with children, I'm a former teacher and what is, so different levels, and they do require different levels of oversight and monitoring, too. But yes, it's, engagement is our focus as an entire team. That's like the one main buzzword that we are all focusing on at every level, so.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, everyone, and I really appreciate it.
That was a lot, yeah.
Awesome stuff. Thanks for your patience.
Good job. All right, moving on to reports from the Headwaters representative.
Okay, I'm gonna read it.
You gonna do it?
You're in luck. Rachel's not gonna try to read it. The first is the Monster Mash Fun Run Dash. Headwaters is currently promoting it, and it takes place, once again, on Saturday, October the 4th, mark your calendars. Welcome all family, friends, neighbors to dress up in their best costume or fall festive gear and walk, run, or dash the 5K route through rural Washington. I'm gonna check the schedule and try to get some cross-country runners there. There will be trick-or-treating stations along the race route, giving awards and door prizes, and hope to see everyone. Time is running out, so register soon. Registration information can be found on the Headwaters website. All money raised for this race goes to supporting students and teachers of RCPS through Headwaters Foundation. The enrichment clubs is the next piece of that year. They're in full swing. Karen has started the line dancing with the girls last Thursday. Yeah, I heard they're really good. They did the talent show last year, right? So, yeah, we need something, they're gonna have to bust out some new moves. Broadcast journalism is off to a great start, and the students are really getting into it. They have selected their research topics and will begin interviewing this week, with recording scheduled for later this week. The hope is to broadcast the results to the school by the end of the month. Ms. Berry is working with a small group of K through 2nd grade students on reading, literacy, fluency, coding, et cetera. Ms. Jenkins is working with the 4th grade on spelling words, definitions, and VA Studies homework. We're hoping to take a field trip to an orchard or close by for some apple picking. The date is to be determined, so that's all the after-school work.
Thank you. MBGS?
MBGS Thursday.
Next Thursday. All right, moving on to this information item. This was about our FOIA training, FOIA training that's mandatory, and you've sent emails to people that have to do different ones, right? Different which ones? Like, I mean, you sent me one very specifically and...
Yeah, me too. I gotta, I have a hard time logging in.
I took, just so you're aware, before you say yes to the class, it took an hour and 40 minutes for the one class I took.
It pauses.
Oh, yeah. So it's a commitment. All right, moving on to public comment. Does anybody like to address the board's seating?
I'm Seth Ritter from the Wakefield District, and I just want to put another plug in for the Monster Dash Run Crawl. You can come in costume. I'm suggesting that the school board come as a team in costume. You're gonna go through scenic Washington, Virginia, and you can stop and get your trick-or-treats along the way, so another opportunity for community engagement. I hope to see you guys here. October 4th.
October 4th. But how will you know if we're really there?
Pretty much.
Right. Is there anyone else this evening?
Good Mr. Lady. I have to say, let me just know, Larry Grob is so awful. I just want to say, I'm really excited to, first off, here on stuff over REACH, obviously I've been heavily engaged in that, but people keep asking me, as, you know, I'm running, taking over Larry's spot, whatever's gonna happen, we'll see in November, but they keep saying, what's your platform? What's your platform? I said, I don't think I really have a platform, but if I did have a platform, I think it would be parental engagement. That would probably be my platform. And I'm really excited to hear that you guys have this on the schedule, and it's talked about here, and that we can really work on that and build upon that. I did want to give some background. I'm not sure when there was last volunteer coordinator. I've been here for 16, 18 years, and I don't know of one, which is really hard to believe because... Well, I did, I did do the Tuesday folders occasionally when we stopped Tuesday folders, but that was the only type of engagement that I could find to get into the schools, and that's probably why I've become so involved with PTO, is to try to find a way, how can I get in the schools and help? And the PTO has a lot of opportunities. I also wanted to just point out, maybe you guys didn't speak to it, but there's now requirement for out-of-county individuals to actually turn in time schedules of when they're volunteering in the schools, and that's, I've heard back from some of them that we don't even understand, when, where are we supposed to do, what can we do, where can we go? So there's a real need for communication as to what can we do to get involved with the schools. Maybe you guys are hearing that back from the teachers or from the parents, but I would love to see somehow parents to understand how we can use them in the schools, because obviously, the more you get a parent involved, the better your schools, so.
Well, it was this century, let me remember it. Since 2000.
Well, we're going to 2005, so.
Actually, the elementary schools still have a flat roof, so that tells you how long it's been.
I've been really involved, and it was probably five or six years ago that I even found out there was some sort of a volunteer luncheon that was had. I just want to say, I've never been invited to that volunteer luncheon. Just surprises me, so.
Okay. All right. Work to do. Work to do. Is there anybody else?
Not better at all, but you know.
Have to talk to your new school board representative about that.
Probably the school board representative's phone.
Anyone else? Right, moving on, we have no action items tonight. Is there any new business? Good business.
I said I was gonna say this every month until I was left. What's our phone situation? What are we doing with phones? We're good?
No, good. So, yes, I mean, we have the law in place. Students, of course, are, you know...
Testing the water, aren't you?
Of course, of course, and it's a difficult thing to police, you know, when you're, the last thing teachers and administrators want to do is continuously get in a power struggle over, you know, where the phone is on your person and if you, you know... So we need everybody's help. I know the principals have put out information to parents, let please partner with us on this. We do need reinforcement about, you know, making sure it stays away, this is the rules, we, you know, didn't write them, but we have to play a game, too, you know? But also, it is, the science is incontrovertible. We know that, you know, this is a major addiction among students, and it's a really dangerous point in time in their brains to have access to that all the time. So we're continuously looking at different ways. We have, we just met this morning as an administrative team about new strategies to try to get students more involved and say, work with us on this, too. How can we, you know, engage with you about how this can work respectively and how we can help each other and help us help you?
That might be another parent engagement program. Just for information, I talked with my son from Northern Virginia, who's in charge of all that stuff for one of the counties up there. And he said about 65% of the students have figured out a way to break into their bag, into their $250,000 bag that they purchased for all those phones. So it's, it's what it is.
But for the most part, we are finding, most, of course, most of our students are complying. We've got our, you know, our frequent flyers and...
Sure.
But that's okay.
Can that happen? I'm gonna read some of the donations. It's good for us to know what's happening. We had $3,600 worth of donations last month. $500 was from the Flint Hill United Methods for School Supplies. $3,163 came from the Repack Lions Club to cover mater space at the school.
That's a side of the computer lab.
And to cover the cost of the athletic physicals that are happening in the school. So that's the donations that came in that I forgot to mention. We have a school board conference coming up in November, and people that are on the ballot that succeed are also invited to go to that. Since we have rooms at the lodge this year, we need to make sure we've made accommodations that can go. So make sure you know what that date is. I can't, I don't have it in front of me, but...
I do, I'm trying to figure out my life schedule and then...
Good, it's a great, it's a great opportunity to spend time with the board and see some interesting topics that are in common with other districts in the state. It's a very unique time. It's a very unique time. Is there any other new business?
Rachel has a comment, too. Having school assemblies for everyone at school seen for their skills and action could be great at the high school level, too.
All right, is there, is there any request for future agenda items on the board? Anybody? Our next regularly scheduled school board meeting is in the same room, I believe. Same room, October the 14th, 6:30 PM. You should make that. Is there a motion to go to closed session?
I move the board convene to closed session for the following purpose, to discuss and consider the appointment and resignation of a staff for certified classified coaching positions, discussions of the superintendents' goals pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1.
We have Bush, Mr. Grove, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. McCool, all in favor? Aye. Aye, please, no. So we're, we're gonna go to this room right here, right? For 20 minutes, 20 to 30 minutes at the most, 20 minutes, if you want to hand around.